Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, Deputy Clerk, if you could take the role.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor Furlong.
Here. Quorum is present. To this time, motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. This time, we have a presentation. I think they're all out in the hall, not knowing that we... I'd like to welcome everybody. It's a beautiful day. Sun was shining. So we have a presentation, Century College, 916 student-built home interior design group. And this is always one of my fun nights because my daughter is an interior designer. Yep. So I used to listen to her presentations when she was at school. Welcome, Tom. You got the floor.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you. So I guess tonight, I was just going to give you an update on the project and then turn it over to Eric Layatt. He'll give us an update on the communication with neighborhood. And then after that point, we'll turn it over to Catherine Harrington and the interior design team.
Good.
The home's going well, even given the struggles of the current building industry and what we're dealing with. Had some of the suppliers that we've always used in the years past back out. Not so much because they don't want to do the work, they physically can't do the work. So they're getting so overwhelmed with work right now. So a good example of that would be the drywall. The gentleman called me, which was awesome, and said he just can't do it. So I got on the phone and contacted my builder friends, and within a couple of weeks, we had somebody out there. So it's moving along. A little bit slower than what I anticipated. The initial date I wanted to have the open house was mid-June. I need to push that out to like mid-July, just because of product availability and people. And so I had the last commitment last week with our friends from Hardcraft. And so they want, again, want to supply all the mirrors and shelving pro bono. And their nearest install date, they can guarantee me, is July 6th. That's how far booked, everybody's out. So that's kind of where we're at with the building. We started exterior finish today. Siding will be coming in a week. As far as the inside goes, the home is completely drywalled, and they sprayed textured the ceilings yesterday. They should be in tomorrow to sand, and then they'll start doing interior painting after that. And everything's ordered. I have to order stuff. It used to be like two weeks, now it's like two months in advance, just because of the supply chain issues.
Crazy.
It's really crazy. So before I turn it over to Eric Layatt, are there any questions for me?
Have you had a lot of people asking if they could buy the house?
One gentleman.
One gentleman.
Yeah. But, you know, I told them we take Visa. I mean, we're fine. We're fine with that. So there's been interest. The neighbors have been really supportive. And so there's a gentleman lives down the street. He brings us donuts every couple of weeks.
Oh, nice.
And then Bill, who lives down the street, I actually knew his brother, I didn't even know they were related. And so he stops by once in a while. So there's another gentleman that lives further down, and he's retired carpenter from Carl Sanderson. And he thinks it's a good deal. The city and the schools are partnering up, taking which was a problem house in the community and making something positive. From my exposure with the community, it's been really good.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I stopped there today. I was kind of, I wanted to take a peek. And it's, yeah, it's shaping up. And those kids, they're out there, you know, weather, you know, with the bad weather. But it's looking good. So if it's another month, that's okay.
Okay, I appreciate that. I try to hold to my due dates, but sometimes things are out of my control with that. Other good news, I mean, we haven't had any vandalism, no theft of materials. So that's been good. And, you know, it's going well. And so we're trying to control even material waste. I think I just got my first dumpster in there for the drywall. Otherwise, we've been... Well, the donut story is a little bit more in-depth. And so the gentleman that gives us donuts, we box over scrap wood, and he burns it in his fireplace or something like that. So good community outreach, I guess. We'll go with that one. Yes, Scott?
One question. You're saying that July open house, it's kind of pretty much everything's done. When do you anticipate it listing? And then what do you anticipate the listing price to be?
I'd say we could probably start listing it early, just to spark some interest in it. I would say the sale price, I've been talking to some of the builders that have been out visiting, and they're looking at this house going 410. And I'm like, eh, I'm still thinking 380. And the budget I had set up is like 340, 350, somewhere in there. So hopefully, it's a profit. Well, it will be a profit to the city to invest in other properties, and we just keep this thing going. You know, I think the goal here is to not lose money, provide an educational opportunity, and improve the community of North St. Paul.
Right. I appreciate that. Appreciate that. Any other questions for Tom? If not, is it?
It's probably mine. I forgot to take something. So I'll turn it over to Eric Layatt. Yeah, I better answer that one quick.
Hi, everybody. My name is Eric Layatt. I'm the proud Assistant Principal at the 916 Current Tech Center. So I know we had some concerns about the neighbors. I've been emailing them every week, giving them some tentative updates and when certain noises that are outside that the normal are going to be. And I haven't heard any complaints.
Eric, I've heard so many compliments about your updates and getting the word out there. So I appreciate that.
All right.
Hopefully, that's kind of put a blanket on any kind of...
Good. I mean, I don't know if they email you directly, like, oh, my gosh.
Nope.
No idea. And I invited...
You're doing a great job.
Thank you. I invited them all tonight to see it, but that's the way it goes. So, all right. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Catherine Harrington. She is the Interior Design Instructor, Professor at Century College.
Catherine, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us here again. My students have worked hard. We just have a class of four this year, which kind of makes decisions easier, but makes harder work for everybody. Alexis, Karen Shelby, and Rebecca, and they'll be presenting. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about this project and how much I think it benefits everybody. First of all, it certainly benefits the city of North St. Paul and our collaboration with two schools that we collaborate with, 916 and the St. Paul College students. The people who end up buying these houses get just, as I say this every year, such a little jewel and gem of a house. You know, I've seen Tom, last time we were out there at the house, and Tom was with his students out there making them undo something again because it wasn't quite right. So you know everything is done right and sturdy and square and good in these houses. And they're a one-off. You know, they're not a, they're not a kind of a whole development full of the same thing.
Right.
Cabinet's same thing. These are custom cabinets that these folks get, and they're done well, and they're beautiful, and the finishes are beautiful. So they end up with something that is really something special, and we are so happy to be involved. We figure our part of this is work within the budget, which is always quite small, and try to make the whole house look kind of richer than it is. And we hope we've done that. And we'll talk about what our thought processes and what our plan was. And we've got a little PowerPoint, and I do have a few copies.
Go ahead. We can share.
Can you see it? We do have a digital presentation available. I don't know if we're able to share our digital presentation. Okay, can you show us?
Is this your first presentation in front of a city council?
Yes.
It is? It is? Don't be nervous. So my daughter graduated from NDSU in interior design, and she now works in Austin, Texas for a architect firm. And does a lot of commercial. She loves, loves it down there. And she just got her license. So she's a certified designer. I don't know the term of it, but it's there. Yep, yep. Right, right. Well, we never had problems here. On and off. Uh, yes. Yep.
Just don't touch that screen there because it leaves a mark. We can't figure out how to turn it off.
When I first saw it, I thought it was a golf, a golf club or...
Okay. Oh.
Yeah, we can't figure out how to turn that function off on that screen, so just don't touch that screen. You'll make it worse. We gotta unplug it later and plug it back in, maybe.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, so we are calling this project the Urban Cottage. So our urban cottage design focuses on comfort and relaxation that you think of when you hear cottage, while possessing elements of modern elegance. The design focuses on organic colors and materials to nod to a biophilic aesthetic, which means bringing the outside in and feeling connected to nature. We have created a furniture plan for the house to show potential furniture arrangements. So here is the main floor. Can we see the mouse moving? I don't know. Okay, perfect. So this is the entry here. So as you walk in, there are some stairs going down, but you can make your way through. There will be some room to put maybe like an entry table or whatever, you know, hang your keys, whatever you need. The living room, can see at least six people, probably more. We'll make our way into the kitchen here. Very large island, six-foot island. We have a pantry here, and then we can make our way back to the dining room. And then there is also access to the backyard through a slider here. As we make our way back through the hallway, there is a laundry and a mudroom space. And further down the hallway, there's the first bedroom. There's a guest bath, linen closet, and then the owner's bedroom, including a very large walk-in closet and an owner's bath. And then if we make our way all the way back down to the lower level, large family room, big enough for a sectional, whatever the family or who knew home buyers want to put there. There's bedroom three, and then bedroom four, and then a three-quarter bath, mechanical, and then storage space, which is really nice for a house this size to have that storage.
Big size house. How many?
Yeah.
Do you know how much square foot it is?
Thirteen?
Finished square footage is 2,500.
Oh, wow. I was way off. Do you want to talk about the exterior?
Want to pull that microphone down? There you go.
All right. So starting with the exterior, we enhanced the curb appeal by incorporating shake siding. And to bring the front, bring front to the character and timeless list look, we use really rich brown, earthy tones. And then we added two light fixtures, modern light fixtures on the exterior, both sides of the garage. The front door is a beautiful green color to bring that earthiness tones back in there. We can see the hardware, black aged bronze. And then we move into the, oh, the siding, I guess it'll touch the shakes, and then we have the siding on there as well. Moving into the entryway, we have, over here, we have some really nice luxury vinyl plank. It looks almost just like real wood. And then we also have a beautiful pendant lighting in that entryway. And then moving down the stairs, there'll be carpet down there. But the wall color is lighter white, kind of Greek villa is the color. And then the trim work is all repose gray right there.
Do you mind if I stand here?
Nope.
So I can point to different things? Okay, so we are moving on into the kitchen. And so we're trying to create flow and consistency. And so we're going to have this wood floor carry on through to the kitchen. And then from that one board, which you just took down, there was a light fixture that had black metal and some brass in it, and it has some beautiful lights that were circular. And so that will tie in with the lighting that we have here, which is really nice because it really has... And this is not a side view, but these are actually circular, and there's going to be circular bulbs. So it's nice because they relate, but they don't look like they came from the same, you know, kit or whatever. So that just kind of helps elevate the space. The focal point of the kitchen is the island right here. And so you'll have the light fixture hanging over it. And then contract interiors donated this countertop, and it's really beautiful. It has a lot of... I mean granite countertop, but it has a lot of movement. And so it really is eye-catching. And so that's the focal point. And then to bring the urban cottage feel, we chose a shaker-style door. And we kept the uppers in the light color right here, and the lower cabinets in the green, so to bring in that organic feel. We kept the lighter on the top just to keep it more, you know, open, fresh. That way, you can be in the living room and have a little more versatility and decorate that area. Bringing in the brass again, and cottage-themed, you know, these poles are very cottage style. And then we, around the perimeter, we went with Formica black countertop. And it has just a little bit of a cream-colored veining in it, so it doesn't compete with the island. And it also provides contrast for the backsplash that is here. And this is the tile that we're going to use. And the tile, actually, each piece, there's some variation in it. So what we're trying to create is the texture versus the pattern. And then we are mixing some metals by incorporating stainless steel appliances. And staying within the budget, we were able to get some great pieces. Our favorite is the oven. It's a slide-in. And so it kind of gets it more of a custom feel. And then we've got these French door refrigerator with a freezer below.
What do you mean a slide-in oven?
So typically, like a bottom line appliance would be, like you put it in, but you would see like the panel that kind of juts up above.
Okay.
Here.
Oh.
Whereas this is more seamless.
Okay.
Clean line, and it looks custom-built in. And it has, the refrigerator has water filter in there inside. And then this is the faucet for the sink. And then this is our pantry. This is another showstopper, too. Actually, the plan originally called for just regular doors on a closet. And so we were lucky to be able to incorporate this. There's actually four different cabinets to be able to open and seal your food items.
Did you reach and grab everything?
These ones, you might, on the upper cabinet, or shelves, you might need.
Little.
Okay.
But, because they're nine-foot ceilings. But you should be able to reach the lower cabinets here.
Okay.
Moving on to further into the home, into the bathrooms and the bedrooms, we have continued with our layered lighting of both brass fixtures and black fixtures. In the guest hall bathroom, we decided to hang pendants down because it's pretty narrow, and it was hard to put sconces on the side, which is actually the most optimal for lighting in a bathroom is to have the lighting on either side of your face instead of above. So we decided to hang them from the ceiling so that they hit from the side. We are incorporating our same kind of biophilic green theme. And we chose another version of the green for the walls in the first guest bathroom, I guess we're calling it. And we're using a luxury vinyl tile, which is kind of this gray wood tone in that bathroom. Black fixtures in the guest bathroom, we also, contract interiors also donated another slab of the type of granite. It's more of a gray kind of speckled granite, and we'll use that on the vanity. And then the bedrooms will be carpeted, and we have chosen a semi-flush mount with a drum shade to kind of elevate the lighting in there. Moving on into the master bathroom, it's a double vanity, and we have chosen sconces to flank both the mirror and in the center, again, for the optimal lighting. And we've chosen this kind of brass fixtures in the master bathroom so that it's got a little bit of a different flair than the other bathrooms. And we chose a stained vanity in this kind of wood tone. And the walls in there will be lighted, and the flooring will be the same as in the other. And I believe we are using part of the kitchen island slab for the vanity top, countertop in there. So that elevates it a little bit and makes it a little different than the other bathrooms.
Okay, moving back to the mudroom and the laundry space. On the original plan, there was just like a standard closet in that space. There's actually two closets, and we opted to get rid of the larger one and put in this mudroom bench to give the homeowners a space to sit down, you know, take off their winter boots in the winter, just have somewhere to, you know, sit down, put your things, and then storage as well. And then in the laundry space, just right across, in the same room, but across from the bench, we opted to stack our washer and dryer to give us room for a utility sink. And then we're also going to have the same Formica top as the kitchen in there around the sink. And then the color is going to be this repose gray, which is going to be the trim and the doors throughout the whole house. So that'll be in there and kind of give like a richness to that room. And then as we move down to the stairs and downstairs, it says carpet on the stairs, and then throughout the whole basement, this is going to be the light fixture for the bedrooms. And then the downstairs bathroom, we wanted to add something special in that bathroom to kind of give the basement, you know, something special, right? So we chose this vinyl, kind of, it's just kind of like a sheet, sheet vinyl, but it gives the look of tile, like almost like a marble tile. And it kind of has that like classic vibe to it, so it kind of brings in that cottage-y atmosphere. And then we're going to also use the same deep green as the kitchens. We're repeating that down there. And then we've paired it with black fixtures to kind of give it that modern vibe. And then the countertops are going to be the donated stone from our new source.
Very nice.
And I think that is it.
I'll tell you what, whoever buys this house is going to be so lucky because if you go to buy a house nowadays, I mean, it's, like you say, it's cookie cutter. You know, every house has kind of the same fixtures in it, and you've got designers that design, and your input is worth a lot of value into that house. Because I could never do that. I'd be, I'd be at Menards picking out just a regular light. So what's the hardest part of designing? Is it trying to get within a budget, or what would you say?
I think, you know, a budget obviously plays a huge role because there are so many options, and there's such a wide range of selections out there in price ranges. I don't know. I guess the hardest part, I guess, would just be picking from all the different options.
Yep. Kind of sounds like city council. So, yeah, no, I appreciate that. Like I said, whoever gets that house is going to be in for a treat.
Absolutely. It's, not only is it beautifully well-built, the quality of what goes into it is good. And then we hope our selections add to that, that feeling of, if we keep using the reality, but looking a little bit richer than it is, which we don't want to.
Right, right. And thank you for all you do and your team and being a part of this program. It's... Right, right. Right, right. No, it's good. So are you guys almost done with the program then, or you at the tail end? Or is this the end of the pro? Okay. Well, good. Congratulations and good luck on...
Thank you.
Thanks for letting us come and do this.
Oh, we love it. We love it. This is a... Right. And it's, it's like you say, that product is now in that house. Where, I know my daughter, when they, when they did their practicals, whatever, it was more or less... Right. Right, right. Great. Thank you. Thank you all, and good luck. Tom, do you have anything more to add? Can you tell us why you had to move the washer and dryer from one side to the other, or...
It was more of a visual thing. And so when you were standing in the living room, you would be looking at the washer and dryer. And so we kind of wanted to not look at that, so we flipped them around. We were always going to stack them to get in a laundry tub, a place to wash up a little bit. And stacking them where the initial location was wouldn't work because on these front loads, the wash machine has to go on the left. If you stack them, the door opens up backwards for you, so it obviously...
And again, I can't tell you the value of having someone in there who cares to do something like that because that just brought another element to that house that if you didn't have done that, they would have been looking at a washer and dryer sitting in the living room. So, yeah, a lot of value there. Eric, thank you for... Eric, thank you for all your help and appreciate it. And we'll be, we'll see you down the road for the open house. Take care. So at this time, I have another presentation, a proclamation for Arbor Day. Let me pull it up real quick here. This is Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting or more, of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life, giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council of the City of North St. Paul, I, Terrence Furlong, Mayor of the City of North St. Paul, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, as Arbor Day in North St. Paul. And I urge all citi-citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And be it further resolved, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Signed this nineteenth day of April, twenty-twenty-two. So that is Arbor Day proclamation. And we have the consent agenda, which is the April fifth workshop meeting minutes, the April fifth regular meeting minutes, the general claims, the HRA claims, the building permit report for March, the resolution approving acceptance of donations received March twenty-twenty-two, revising the staff complement and expenditures in the twenty-twenty-two budget related to the human resources manage-manager slash assistant to the city manager, RMS user agreement between North St. Paul Police Department and Ramsey County Attorney's Office, squad video camera technology conversion, uh, bucket truck purchase, open position on alternate to the Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, MMPA Board for North St. Paul. Item L was taken out. M is special event main drag vintage and collectibles sidewalk sale. Special event fallen angel tattoo grand opening. And the last is the special event for Max Diner grand opening. At this motion, at this time, a council member can take an item out if they can, they do want to do so at this time. If not, a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This time, the meeting is open to the public and I do have one, and that is Artie. Welcome again.
Very quick update for you. Season's coming to a close for the regular club season. Going down to Nationals here, coming up again, it seems like it was yesterday that we were down there.
You're saying Florida or?
Yep, yep, back, back in Florida again. And camp is ridiculously well-attended, numbers are up there. Our program is growing, we added boys. So boys volleyball has started, that was like three weeks ago now. So that's continuing to grow, we look to have teams for that next coming, next season. That said, we're still here, you guys, we're still here. We've been walking this path for the past three years together and it's been challenging at times, but we're still here. And if the city were to be interested in selling the building, we're still here. Does that mean we might have two locations? Yes, it does, and we're okay with that. So just know that, that we're still here, we're here to walk this path with you guys as you continue to move down it. Our only concern right now, as you heard from Ron, is the heat. And that is on a timeline. And the fact that the city does know about it and we could run out of heat, like that's a concern. So I would and I completely sympathize with Councilmember Cole. And I wanted to approve anything without more concrete information about the library lease, I, I get it. That said, I mean, we know the heat is nine months out to get that repaired, so that's my only real concern right now. I mean, come October next year, when the heat needs to be turned back on, if it doesn't work, we're gonna have some issues, so getting that resolved as soon as possible would be greatly appreciated. And that said, I mean, if we're, we're not gonna sell and like I said earlier, if we wanna just move that down, give you guys some more time, we can certainly do that too. So we're here to walk that path with you, and we have been, so, thank you, appreciate it.
So at this time, anybody on Zoom? Nothing on Zoom. We have no public hearings. This time, the city business action items and recommendations. We have two items, one is the, set the sale for the nine-million-dollar general obligation bonds. And the second one is concurrence of bids and joint powers agreement with Maplewood for the Ariel Street and Utility Improvement Project. So at this time, I think Morgan, are you? Oh, Dan. Dan and Morgan, just Dan. So Dan, I'll turn it over to you and, uh...
All right, thank you, Mayor, council members. I know it's tough to, to be excited about going out and selling almost ten million dollars worth of bonds, but actually, there's a story behind this and, and it actually is pretty exciting. If you can remember, last year as we were going through the budget process, we made the decision to call some bonds. We made the decision to restructure some bonds last year. What that all did was that actually reduced our debt levy for this current year of twenty-twenty-two. And in addition to that, it opened up some capacity of approximately four-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars on an annual basis, so we could actually go out for a bond this year. So, I don't, in spite of everything, we were looking at about a nine-point-two-million-dollar issuance, well, total project cost, using ARPA funds of approximately one-point-three, bringing it down to an issuance of seven-point-nine, we're sitting at about two million dollars higher. I think we're, we're facing the same thing that everybody is, and that's inflation. And costs are rising and we're also dealing with the rising of interest rates. And the, and the feds are talking about, you know, a number of upticks that they're looking at throughout twenty-twenty-two. Good news. We still have very good interest rates right now. We got out, good planning, a lot of credit has to go definitely to, to this City Council for the, for the, the site and the planning of, of taking care of these projects that were on the top priority. In addition, the great work that WSB has done, particularly Morgan and his whole entire team, in helping to develop and to move fast and trying to get specifications out so we could get out on the, the street and get bids. Morgan will talk about one of the bids that, that has come in. But more importantly, the bids have been coming in very favorable to the city. If you remember, incorporated into our ten-year capital plan, these projects were all identified, costs have gone up. We've been able to utilize the ARPA money in a little bit different way. We were at one point in time kind of looking at using that for the, the water and the infrastructure, because that was kind of what was required at the time by, by the feds. That has now changed. Their final rulings, they opened up a, a little bit more flexibility. There was the opportunity, at one time, that you, how it was written before is that you could do and recognize a loss in revenue. We really didn't have a, a lot, you know, a loss of revenue, but there was a, a long, lengthy calculation that you would have to do to be able to come up with that revenue loss. In their final ruling, they allowed a ten-million-dollar, up to ten-million-dollar one-time, if you're underneath that, you just take that, take that, that loss. So, you know, we're anticipating you getting a little over one-point-three-million dollars, we'll take that loss. Which that allows us to do is we don't have to be restrictive on, on the water components of the project, we can actually shift it to the street components of it, which then holds that amount that we levied, so we're not going to have another impact on, on our residents in taxes coming into twenty-twenty-three. In addition to that, we've got a fantastic partner as a, our, as our financial advisor in Baker Tilly, particular Michaela. And Michaela is online if we do have some additional questions for her that she can answer, she certainly will do so. But we were going out, we're looking at a maximum of twelve-million dollars for street reconstruction. What's in front of you now and what we're looking at is almost ten-million dollars. It's pretty close to a split. We're looking at, I believe it's four-point-six of street reconstruction and then five-point-four, that will be utility revenue bonds. So by doing this, in, in addition to that, Michaela also identified that if we can keep this underneath ten-million dollars, and which will be underneath there by five-thousand dollars, it, it ends up becoming bank-qualified, which actually gives us a little bit lower of an interest rate. What does that mean? It means over the twenty-year period, it can save us an additional three-hundred-thousand dollars. So we're gonna take advantage of that. What it mean for, what it means for us is that we have to put up, upfront, an, an additional hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars to bring us down underneath that ten-million dollars, which again, my recommendation is that we, we move forward with that. And so the bonds have been structured to, to go in, down that path. So really, this is a real good news type of story. It's nice to see where we can have a plan and even through some adversity, adversity of inflation and everything else, and we're, we're, we're taking advantage of still historically low interest rates. We're able to do the right things. We're not giving up anything at this point in time in any of our designs or any of our, our plans. We're not compromising anything. I know, I know when I was here, when, just the, the last meeting, I think it was on the, the fifth, one of the concerns that the City Council had raised is that we, we somehow have a tendency of, I'll use the phrase, kicking things down the road. But here, we're taking care of everything that we had identified to date, so that's another good news. So I, I'm, I'm not gonna go through all of the detail, we know what the projects that we're, that we've identified. It's a twenty-year bond, we've got pretty constant levies that we're going to have, you know, it'll range from, you know, approximately three-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars a year to three-hundred-and-thirteen, so it's pretty level. We're looking at approximately a two-point-eight percent interest, true interest cost on these bonds. We're, we're taking, right now, the bonds have been structured at thirty points over the current interest rates. We're still a little, you know, concerned of, is that gonna be enough? In the last week, they've gone up eight to ten basis points. So I think we're on, we think we'll be close, even if they go up a little bit higher, we should still be underneath our levy amount, but we'll know a little bit more when the sale goes, goes out. The sale should be May seventeenth. We have some more documentation to put together, we'll have a call rating in early May. And I think we're set. Our advisors, Baker Tilly, also concurs that what they're seeing is that they believe, especially with the feds looking at, you know, increasing interest rates to combat inflation, that we'll see higher interest rates. So us being out now and early is for the city's benefit. And they are saying, stay the course, go out and, and sell. So if there's any specific questions, I certainly would take those. There is a resolution in the packet that does need to be passed to set the, the sale date.
Any questions for the Finance Director? Good presentation.
It's exciting, it really is. It's nice to see a, a plan come together. And this gentleman to my right will, will, will kick off the next item, and so far, he's only delivered good news, so, or is that trend continuing?
Rates are going up.
No!
Okay. You're the second part, so we need to pass the resolution first so that, and I believe the resolution is providing for the competitive negotiated sale of nine-million-nine-hundred-ninety-five-thousand dollars in general obligation bonds. I believe that's the motion? Is that correct, Finance Director? Okay. So moved by Councilmember Thorson?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any other discussion? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Turn it over to City Engineer Morgan Dolly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This next item on your agenda here is a consideration of something that was previously discussed by council. This is a joint project with the City of Maplewood that contemplates roadway improvements on Ariel Street from the south cul-de-sac, just north of Highway thirty-six, all the way up to Seventeenth Avenue. It is a city street on the border of North St. Paul and Maplewood. The city limits actually goes right down the center of the road. So the, the road ownership responsibility is fifty-fifty between North St. Paul and the City of Maplewood. In this instance, as previously discussed by council, the City of Maplewood is the lead agency, meaning they're the contracting agency. They have gone out for bids. And the action item for consideration here in front of council is twofold. So number one is to review the bid results that Maplewood has received and to concur with one of two options. So there are two alternates built into the Maplewood project for the improvements to Ariel Street. Bid alternate one is basically just kind of the, the base bid, which is the improvements to Ariel Street, as I mentioned, in that area. As part of the North St. Paul portion, we do have some City of North St. Paul water main, which needs to be replaced, so that's also a part of bid alternate one as a, as a base bid. And then bid alternate two, which as requested by City Council, included the addition of sidewalk on the east side of Ariel Street. Now originally, it was discussed that sidewalk would be contemplated between Eleventh Avenue and Seventeenth Avenue. Through some subsequent meetings with residents, with public work staff, myself, I was out there, it was observed that actually pedestrians, specifically students getting off the school bus at the intersection of Eleventh Avenue and Ariel Street, actually walked south on Ariel Street as well, between Ninth Avenue approximately and Eleventh Avenue. And so we just included some sidewalk in that two-block piece as well, just to see, you know, as the prices came in, if we wanted to consider sidewalk or if council wanted to consider the full sidewalk, it would actually, as proposed here and as priced here with the bid, would be on the east side again from Ninth Avenue to Eleventh Avenue, continuing through Eleventh Avenue all the way north to Seventeenth. So just a little clarification on the sidewalk there.
We don't have a visual, do we, map?
I, I don't, no, I, we just had a, a map previously, I can actually, if it's important, I can certainly bring that up. At any rate, I'll keep discussing the bids. What I can report is that the, uh, the bids came in favorably. There were only two bids, which that was interesting, I had a conversation with the Public Works Director at Maplewood today. He didn't have any information as to why only two bidders. The low bidder that is being considered for award on the project, whether or not North St. Paul moves forward or not with bid alternate one or alternate two. And I should mention, the city does have the option of giving direction on not awarding either alternate, that is a, a, a third option here on the table. That is a, a, a third option here on the table. But the low bidder is local contractor, T.A. Shifsky &amp; Sons. You're all familiar with their work. Obviously, they've worked on several North St. Paul projects over the years. And so they would be the anticipated awarded contractor a week from yesterday at the Maplewood council meeting. As I mentioned, the bids were favorable. The results are in your packet here. And I guess I should mention, as I'm working on a map here, the two alternates in terms of what is presented in the table in the memorandum, that's the total cost. And so the low bid for bid alternate one was 721,785 dollars and 75 cents. And bid alternate two, so with the sidewalk, was 918,000,985 and 65 cents. Now, below that, I've provided a little bit more detail in terms of the cost participation split between North St. Paul and Maplewood. Obviously, Maplewood has some responsibility for the roadway portion. North St. Paul would carry the responsibility for half the road, plus our water main. And for the sidewalk alternative, which is alternate two, the sidewalk would be 100% North St. Paul responsibility. So those costs, you know, so not, not what would we be awarded, but at the end of the day, when everything was constructed, and we would use actual construction costs to actually finally settle up at the end, Maplewood would pay the contractor upfront and we would reimburse them after the project. But North St. Paul's costs, construction only, ranged from just over 531,000 for no sidewalk, just over 728,000 for the version with sidewalk. Both of those are below estimates. If you add in contingency and indirect, as contemplated within the capital improvement plan and the bonding program that you just heard about from finance director Winnick, it's about eight to nine percent below kind of our projected costs for, for both of those, right? And so we've always planned for a worst-case scenario with the sidewalk, but it is up to council to, to decide at this meeting. We need to give direction back to the city of Maplewood. Do we move forward with sidewalk or without sidewalk? But again, from a financing standpoint, there are funds available to fund the sidewalk version, even though that is more expensive by approximately $200,000. And then the second item for consideration within the council's packet here, and we just need a, a motion and a second, would be direction to execute the joint powers agreement that is in the packet. Again, that kind of defines the particulars with this arrangement. It's very similar to past joint powers agreements that we've had with the city of Maplewood before on the 2016 Street and Utility Improvement Project and the 2018 Street and Utility Improvement Project. Those were projects where North St. Paul was the lead agency and they were paying for portions that were their responsibility of shared roadways. So this is same situation, very similar agreement, but they are the lead agency and we'd be reimbursing them. I apologize, I don't have a map and I don't have a great way to pull it up because I'm not logged on to the Zoom meeting. So I apologize for that shortcoming on my behalf. But again, in review, in terms of location on the sidewalk, we're talking about the east side of Ariel from 9th Avenue, which is south of 11th Avenue, all the way north to 17th Avenue, which is where there is sidewalk actually to connect to, which would take people east-west on 17th Avenue into Maplewood to the west, towards White Bear Avenue, and also to the east, that'd be on the north side of 17th Avenue. You can get to Casey Lake Park that way. So with that, I know that's a mouthful, but again, there's kind of two combined things here for council consideration. Award or tell Maplewood whether the preference for North St. Paul is to award neither alternate one nor alternate two. Alternate one with, which is Ariel's improvements with no sidewalk, or alternate two, which is Ariel improvements with the sidewalk. And then again, authorization for staff to execute the joint powers agreement with Maplewood, subject to minor edits that the city attorney might have non-substantive. If there was something substantive, we would bring that agreement back. But I'll stand for any questions the council might have at this time.
Does the sidewalk, is that part of our plan? Is that part of our strategic plan?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So in the comprehensive plan, there is an identified pedestrian improvement, not defined specifically like sidewalk or trail or whatever, but the section between 11th Avenue and 17th Avenue is identified on mapping within the comprehensive plan for potential improvements. We've discussed this before in that when a street is reconstructed or fully reconstructed, we might start looking at all sorts of different modes of transportation. How can we, you know, how might we add different things? This was originally contemplated as a more of a rehabilitation project, just reclaiming the streets. Obviously, we have some water main to attend to as well. So we hadn't gotten to that point. But again, based on feedback from the council, that was something that you all wanted to look at, see what the pricing would be, how that might fit within budgets. And so that's what's before you here tonight.
You said that the neighbors were not in favor of the sidewalk? They thought the traffic?
No, at the neighborhood meeting that we had held, and I think I presented on this previously to council, we had not a significant amount of opposition to the sidewalk. There were, and I don't remember the exact numbers, but there were, there were some people that, you know, were for it, some people that were not for it, but nobody was specifically really vehemently against it, as I recall. We did talk about snow removal and how within current ordinance, it's a responsibility of the homeowner, or at least we mentioned that. I should also mention that, you know, at those meetings, not everybody shows up, but you know, that, that, that is by invitation and that's where you learn more about the project, right? We did also have some people in attendance that, at that meeting, that lived at some, on some of the side streets, like Flanders and I want to say 13th Avenue, maybe even 14th Avenue, that had indicated that they would be in support of a sidewalk, even though that wasn't their street or where they lived, but they had said, yeah, that would be helpful or I would use that, or I walk on the shoulder or the side of the roadway now. And so I, you know, they, they, they seemed to indicate support for that type of an improvement.
Any other questions for Morgan? Councilmember Thorson?
I'm assuming the sidewalk's concrete?
That's correct, yeah. And we've designed it at a thickness so that, you know, should it need to be, you know, maintained by heavier equipment, it would be able to handle that.
And absent of the map, when you're talking about the east side, you're talking about the North St. Paul side, correct?
Correct.
Does the cost increase or decrease if it's on the Maplewood side, on the west side?
Um, it might be marginally less, only because there's fewer driveways, but I think, you know, similar dimensions, similar makeup and, and, you know, concrete versus other materials, it would be pretty close to the same.
And the reason I ask that, I mean, I think this is a road that is a candidate, obviously it's in the comp plan and we're trying to improve, you know, walkability and transportation, make things safer. And I look at the map and I count 14 residences on North St. Paul that are impacted. And on the other side of the road, there's six, plus the townhome development on the corner of 11th and 17th. So from just a impact perspective, if we're going to do this and, and we're placing the burden on the homeowner to clear the snow, you know, and I understand now this is on Maplewood's side, so they could just say, no, we're not, we're not doing this. Even if we're saying, well, we're going to pay for it, they could still say no. It would make sense to me that if we're going to make this change, we advocate for the sidewalk on the west side because it's having an impact on the least amount of homeowners. Now, there's this large stretch of sidewalk that abuts to, I don't know what that's considered a swamp or if they consider that a park, but there's no one there in Maplewood. And so the question comes, well, how does that snow get removed? But that's not unique to other areas in North St. Paul where there's large sections of sidewalk that aren't tied directly to a homeowner or a business. I think that somehow it gets taken care of. But I'm just kind of curious if, if that idea has been discussed with Maplewood at all about what if, what if we put it on your side? I mean, have they been receptive to that or is that a no deal or?
Councilmember Thorson, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So that has been discussed with staff. I don't recall if that was based on past discussions with the city council, but I did bring it forward with the engineering, public work staff at the city of Maplewood, pointing out that fewer impacted properties or residential properties, driveways, there's kind of that big pond or whatever that is, wetland there. And they indicated that they would look at it and basically, you know, the feedback that I got or the impression that I got is that it was a North St. Paul kind of requested amenity and there wasn't really a, a lot of interest in terms of making it a city of Maplewood amenity. And so we moved forward with this plan, at least for design and bidding, knowing that we'd be able to present something to you all that would represent, you know, a pedestrian You know, that's not to say that if no sidewalk alternate was awarded here tonight or that guidance was given to the city of Maplewood, there could be further discussions that go on that, you know, I don't know, it could be years down the road. Like a sidewalk could be retrofitted into Ariel Street in this area as a standalone project. I, I guess I couldn't say whether or not we'd receive as favorable prices, right? I mean, things might get more expensive as time goes on, but that, if council wanted to enter into discussions with Maplewood to try to convince them to put it on their side, that's certainly a possibility. But I would not be able to predict whether or not they would be open to that, knowing that we had already kind of asked, pointed out some of the potential benefits. I think they certainly heard what we were saying, but you know, they, they didn't move on that at all.
I think that happened on Holloway. They wanted, um, the Maple, Maplewood wanted.
Yeah, okay, yeah. I think, yeah.
You know, so, yeah, I don't think it'll, it'll happen if we decide to have them put it on their side. I don't think they'll, they'll do it.
Well, I mean, that's a, it's a negotiating thing, right? If you don't ask and you just assume and you don't push back, but, and I'm assuming then to, on the east side, I used, I grew up on the home on the corner of Ariel and Flanders there, it's kind of like a hill, is, is the, the road, I'm assuming is going to be narrowed a bit in that sidewalk on that stretch? Is there going to be like a requirement to build a retaining wall? Or, I mean, we've seen that where if that side of the road's picked, just the topography where you can't avoid it, you gotta, you know, and so, I mean, that's kind of, is that something that's a part of this plan or is that not meeting that?
That was actually one, at least one of the resident meetings that I had, someone who wanted to learn more about, you know, where would this sit and how might this affect the area behind the sidewalk? And so again, to very kind of purposefully or intently, I guess I would say, the design of the sidewalk is, in this proposal here, is to go in that four or five-foot striped shoulder. Okay, so that's the edge of the road there, that I think that shoulder's probably been striped for, I don't know, a generation, right? And, but you can't park there, so it's not like we'd be removing on-street parking. But it seemed like a logical place where we can meet all of the required standards for the road, the lane width, that sort of thing, and not have to get into moving power poles or building retaining walls. I mean, we might need to do a little bit of minor grading on the backside of this sidewalk, but the backside of this particular sidewalk between 11th Avenue and 17th Avenue would sit basically where that striped shoulder is. So the back of the walk is approximately where the back of the existing curb is, if you can visualize that. So not a significant widening into the slope or into people's front yards.
Okay, so essentially, it's losing that shoulder that's striped. The sidewalk will be within that and, okay. So, because I, I mean, when I look at this, obviously sidewalks are controversial. This clearly is an, is an area that we've highlighted, one should go in. I'm not against the sidewalks, I just think it makes more sense to put it on the other side of the road. But, you know, it takes two to play ball here and naturally Maplewood's going to want to say no, but in this case, we're going to pay for it. So was that the question? Is it saying, well, we want a sidewalk here, but we don't want to pay for it, put it on your side? Or was it communicate like, hey, it makes more sense to go on your side and we will pay for it and they're still saying no? Because then the question is, well, we don't want to maintain it. Well, you know, we have a partnership in maintaining this up at Silver Lake, the, what's it, the aerator. I mean, it's not on our property. It's Maplewood's. It's in their property. But the county doesn't want to deal with it, the watershed doesn't want to deal with it, Maplewood doesn't want to deal with it, and we said, well, fine, we'll deal with it. So, I mean, that's just, part of our job is also negotiate for the best interests of our residents and the community. And to me, it just kind of seems like, okay.
I did.
Okay. And they, and they still just said, it's the maintenance issue?
We didn't get into maintenance, but if it, you know, if it were, if the sidewalk were in the city of Maplewood, and I believe they have a similar ordinance in that, you know, they're, if it were in front of a residential property, their, their residents would have to, you know, remove snow. And in the area that is adjacent to that wetland, I think that's, you know, maybe city-owned property, that would either have to be maintained by the city of North St. Paul or the city of Maplewood. We never got to that point.
Okay.
But, you know, in terms of within the confines of like this joint powers agreement and actually getting it done, even if it was on the west side of the road, I did say, well, what if we paid for it? And, yeah, we, we moved forward with what we have in front of you here tonight.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Morgan? So we have, I guess we have two, two alternates and we have to decide on which alternate, one or alternate two. So is there?
Or neither. I mean, so they have the ability to not award anything, but then that, I guess, wouldn't address any of the road improvements or the water main improvements that certainly we've identified that are needs within the community.
So the first, I guess, motion would be alternate number one, Ariel with no sidewalk. Is there a motion for that? Number two would be bid alternate number two, Ariel with a sidewalk. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Wow. So moved by council member Cole, second by council member Wong. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. And then the second motion we have, so is that what you needed? So?
For that one, yeah. And then I would just make sure to, in your motion, include, subject to minor non-substantive edits by the city attorney as kind of proposed for the action, if that's acceptable, yeah.
Add that to the motion?
For authorization for staff to execute the joint powers agreement.
I was going to do that as a second motion.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay. So the second motion is a joint powers agreement between the city of North St. Paul and Maplewood for 2022 Jarvis Area Pavement Rehabilitation Project, including Ariel Street improvements between the cul-de-sac and 17th Avenue East, City of Maplewood Project number 2107 and City of North St. Paul Project number 22-03.
So moved.
So moved by council member Thorson, second by council member Peterson. Is that the right motion you want? All those in favor, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Morgan and Dan. Appreciate it. Anything else? City manager, if you're out there and? Anything? Okay.
No, sorry.
No, sorry, I do not have anything else.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, we have, so no reports of the city manager and departments, reports of city, of council commissions and committees, Councilmember
I just have one quick one. We met, EDA met on 4-2. Primary discussion was, we reviewed parking and green space in the open lot that it currently exists, and I don't have the address on Seventh, but it exists between Sidewinders and the Tattoo Parlor, where the building had been torn down several years ago, and it's just kind of been a dirt parking lot per se for some period of time, and the EDA decided it was time to make it pretty. So we looked at three parking options and three green space options, and I think they came to a consensus as to kind of what they were looking for to push back for someone. Was it WSB that was going to sketch it back up? I can't recall, to move forward with That's all I got?
Good. Councilmember Wong?
Yeah, the Planning Commission met the first of this month. They're wrapping up the sign ordinance. It's been a long, long journey, so it's looking really good. There's a one-pager for business and patio, or businesses that will be developed for, sorry, a one-pager about the patio furniture for the businesses, so they kind of have an idea of, you know, some of the direction we, you know, suggestions we have for the furniture, like, commercial grade.
Is that put together already, or it's coming to council, or?
No, I think it's in the works by staff. We also discussed the wayfinding plan and how it needs to be updated. I think that's part of the park's next move, so. They also discussed planning priorities for the year, and we also had an applicant for the Planning Commission, so that's nice to have someone back on there. And then our next meeting is Thursday, May 5. As for the Arts and Culture Commission, we had interviews yesterday to fill a position. We had three people come and very passionate, very excited, and very good candidates, so looking forward to that as well. The art cart is coming to North St. Paul again. You'll see it at the Music and the Parks as well as the car show. And we saw some drafts of the downtown banners, and so there's a couple options that were thrown on the table, and they're going to take another look at it, and maybe we'll see that coming down the pike. And then, the next meeting is on May 4 at 6:30 here in Sandberg. Thanks.
City manager, did you have something to add to this? It looked like you... Nope, okay. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I just wanted to express my thank you to Morgan Wall. He did a very nice job at the Business Association last weekend, or last Tuesday, and it was very informative. I had people come up and say, yeah, he was, it was very succinct and really knowledgeable that, you know, that you know, you know your stuff, and so I did send him a thank you card, and his boss.
Did he keep it under two hours?
Oh, it was short. I think, I think it was the shortest, the shortest speech ever. Oh, yeah, you weren't there. No, it was within a half hour. It was within a half hour, so well done. Otherwise, I don't have anything else. Thanks.
Councilmember Thorson?
I have nothing, but I do have a question on the Arts and Culture. One of the items was their apparel design, and there appears to be an image, like a silhouette of a different type of snowman, and I thought that we had pretty strict guidelines on the use of our city logo, and that that type of thing isn't allowed. I can't remember the terminology. I think it actually, was actually in a previous Arts and Culture Commission agenda, but they had kind of a design guide on how to use the logo, and that you're not to modify the snowman, and there was only certain colors. Is that ringing a bell for anyone, or?
I think when we redesigned it, I think there was restrictions on it.
Yeah, so it was like, you know, you can't, you know, like the Parks Commission can't take the logo and then change it and say, this is the North St. Paul Parks and Rec, and use a different logo, and then, you know, there were certain ways that you can use the letterhead. There was things like that, but they, I think they had specific direction, and we voted and approved this, its policy. I can't remember the name of the policy, but it was that the logo of the city is not to be manipulated and changed, like you can put a pumpkin on the head of the snowman or something, you know, things like that. And I just, I mean, if you're doing apparel, that's great, but I don't, you know, to design your own logo, I don't think that's consistent with our current guidelines, and if that needs to change, I think we need to amend or change that policy that we have saying you can't, you can't stray from the logo, because that's our official logo.
I was not aware of that. They're changing the snowman?
It was more for using T-shirts to kind of promote the commission because it is new. I don't know where we're at in terms of approving those or moving forward with that or a budget, to my knowledge. We can certainly take a look at those logos and the guidelines and policies around them.
You might want to bring that back to the commission.
Yeah, there was some, and I want to say it was in a previous Arts and Culture Commission where I saw that, where it was that topic item, and I think it was a, oh, I'm sorry, it was the banner guide, okay? Maybe that's where it was. Okay, so here's what I'm talking about. It's, it's like a guide with all the official, the North St. Paul logo, official use guidelines, and they're saying you don't, you know, this, this image has it depicting like he's holding a baseball bat, and I don't know if you can kind of see that, and they're zooming in here, or I can see it on the TV, but it's, you know, they're saying, you can't modify the logo, add a baseball bat and a baseball cap. I mean, it could be because we're promoting North St. Paul youth baseball, but, I mean, this is an official policy that we've adopted, and it's the usage guidelines, and that seems to be strained. So if you're going to use it as an official city, you know, Arts and Culture Commission, City of North St. Paul, that seems to be in violation of that. If it's not official and it's just you guys are, you know, going to do something on your own, I don't, I don't know if that falls in that, but I just...
We'll take a look at it. Thanks.
General business, anything else, Councilmember Thorson?
Nope.
General business, Councilmember Cole?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Wong?
Nothing, thanks.
Councilmember Peterson?
Well, we've got the cleanup. The Silver Lake cleanup is the 23rd of the month, which is Friday. Silver Lake, we'll use anybody. They're going to have probably bags and gloves, so come on up. I don't know, is it nine o'clock carry, or?
Nine.
Nine thirty, okay. And the citywide cleanup is April 30th, so get your junk and get it down to the public works. They're going to have it really slick this year, and we'll take as much as you have, I guess. And then the citywide garage sale will be May 5th to the 7th. It's $10 to get a sign, you'll be advertised, and it's always good to clean out your closets and garage, so keep the city clean. Thank you.
Councilmember Thorson?
Just general question, the city manager's still here, but I think it was at the last council meeting, I asked about the trash and everything along, like the Burger King kind of side entryway, and there, you know, I don't know if code enforcement had a chance to follow up, but I was there again today, and it's just as bad, if not worse. And there also now is a, it's private property, there's a huge snow pile there, someone's clearly dumping snow, and there's garbage all over. So, you know, we've had these high-wind events, I think it's still kind of locked into that snow, but eventually, you know, it's a concern that that stuff's going to be blown into the state trail and onto the highway. Has code enforcement been able to reach the property owners and make them aware of that concern, or?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Thorson, I did bring that to the attention of code enforcement the following day after the council meeting. I didn't get any follow-up, I don't know where we're at on that.
Okay.
I'm sensitive to that, too. You know, that Gateway Trail is really the windows into North St. Paul for a lot of people, and so, you know, I'd like to make sure we're keeping it, keeping it clean. So I will check in on that with code enforcement tomorrow and try to get you an answer.
Okay. Otherwise, when's the cleanup day? Okay, so I will be there on the 30th with my, I will be there on the 30th with my dump trailer, and anyone wants to help loading that stuff up, bringing it to the city cleanup then if it's not resolved, because otherwise, you know, there's no point, and there's been enough time. I believe that private property owner, at least on a tax statement, is, lives in Texas or something, so I'm sure they're not going to do anything, so that's all I have.
I've got, from the consent agenda, we've got the Fallen Angel Grand Opening, which is May 21st, between 3:00 and 10:00 p.m. It's kind of funny, they put on the application, no fireworks, so last year when they, when they did the application, they had accidentally put fireworks in there, and there was a big concern. We actually went and talked to Gabriel, and he said, no, we're not doing fireworks, but in the application, it said he was doing fireworks, and we weren't sure where he was actually going to light off all those fireworks over there, so it's not going to hap, no, there's not going to be any fireworks. But he does have a grand opening, May 21st, between 3:00 and 10:00, and then Max Diner, getting excited for that. The grand opening celebration is Friday, July 8th and Friday, July 15th. Sounds like two of the car show nights, and it'll be in the resident parking lot, they're going to have a live band, and it'll be between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m. That's all I have. Anything else? Last minute. If not, John, I don't know if you know this or not, but you had little spots on your head from the TV screen. We have, we have a little, something going on with our computer, so there's little spots all over the screen, so not only...
You're sick.
You're sick, you got little spots on your, on your head, so. So a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson, second by Councilmember Wong. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Determined?